Feel free to take a little more, take some of it back if you'd like. I mean, we want to make sure we have a good meeting, so I don't want to rush you. But we had scheduled for an hour and try to keep it in there if we can. So again, thanks, thank you and thanks for what you do. Sandy, did you want to make any opening comments or did you just want to bring it?
Chuck, why don't you start?
What we're going to do today is give you a quick overview of what we're, an update from our Department of Development and then I'm going to ask Sandy to provide an update based on the last meeting that we had. Sandy will handle that part of it and I'll hand that off to him at that time. Basically, we just wanted to cover, again, recent successes. I think you all are aware, Wells Fargo, Student Center, Arts Festival, Chrysler Museum, and the EBMS project. One of the things that you may not be quite as familiar with, $12 million Virginia Renaissance Center, Ford plant with the KTN Nadi deal, purchasing 40 acres for about $10 and a half million dollars. They are opening this, or ramping up now with their hiring right now. They're going to make an additional $1.5 million contribution into equipment, creation of 200 jobs. They exercised their option on the 25 acre site adjacent to them. That project could be worth somewhere in the neighborhood of $25, $30 million dollars. As you know, we're working, continuing to work with U.S. Development. We're expecting that they will be...
Chuck, could you stop for just a second? Are you reading or should, do we have a handout or something here? Could you just go and pass something I thought was really important? When you go back to the Ford, is it, is on?
We did not give a hard copy. It's in the drop-up.
Okay, but can you talk about the Ford site a little more about the exercise of the option because, I mean, just a few weeks, when did they exercise the option?
They had until October 31st, but they just are now in the process of closing on that.
Right, okay.
Not quite ready just yet, but...
Are they going to announce that? Are we going to announce it or how do you?
We'll be working with them as soon as we...
Because that's a good news story.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for pointing that out.
I just wanted to stop you at one point.
They did join us at the State of the City. They're delighted with the treatment that they've received in Norfolk in particular. I'd like to give some credit to Isan Moak of our staff who's really gotten a major project, 31 new dock doors into that 664,000 square foot building in a very short amount of time. They are working with us now on their signage, as is the Jacoby Development Group in terms of identification of this as the Virginia Renaissance Center. Remaining 45 acres, we have a lot of prospect activity, so we are seeing a lot of industrial related activity. The good news is it's going to allow us, I believe, to retain some of our existing Norfolk companies that are really needing to expand. So it's finally got a little bit of a pressure valve where we can show some opportunities for expansion in Norfolk. The U.S. Development guys, I believe, are going to be in town. I've not confirmed that date, but I believe it's going to be either this week or early next week, give us an update on everything related to their projects. We are working, as everybody knows, with Centerra on their expansion. Some good news coming in on that. I'll not steal Sandy's thunder on that. And we are continuing to work with Bonse Coors as well. Those are renderings of Centerra Lee and the new Bonse Coors to Fall Medical Center. Obviously, great news, groundbreaking back in October for the Croc Center in the Broad Creek area. The AECOM headquarters is proceeding with their build-out right now. 155 jobs, $99,000 average wages, terrific news. As you know, last Friday, we were able to announce the, at the Midtown Shopping Center, John Dallas is moving ahead with facade improvements, long anticipated and long hoped for in that community, along with what we believe to be very close on the Harris Teeter anchored redevelopment of the eight acre suburban land management deal. Urban Outfitters is on target with their build-out. Bobby Wright, 265 Granby LLC, has turned over the building now to Urban Outfitters for their outfitting. If you've not been by there, stop by and see it. They've opened it all up. Three-story, 15,500 square foot Urban Outfitters, and it is the only one in the region. Obviously, if you've driven down Granby Street toward Ward's Corner, you can see the new $8.5 million Norfolk Collegiate Performing Arts Center really going up quickly. And again, I think in terms of Ward's Corner and the news in that quadrant of our city, we're looking increasingly good. We are working with Farm Fresh on what will be a $2 million or more reinvestment in their store in Ward's Corner, and they're going to be doing some improvements. And we also hope that they will do some additional things that will enhance the site itself. Working very diligently, Isan Moak and the city team that she is a part of on the Slover Memorial Library, our $6 million MacArthur Memorial Expansion, and obviously our consolidated court complex. Wanted to mention these, in particular, the first, Slover, and the courts complex because they have construction jobs in terms of being able to maybe move some Norfolk residents that could use gainful employment into those type of construction opportunities. We're going to talk about that in a minute. I passed out here for you what we did for our rating agency development tour a couple of weeks back, and what we gave them was an overview of the things that are going on in Norfolk, from both the development site potential, the things that we've worked on, and other things that we thought they would find of interest in trying to show that this is a very progressive city, moving it quickly forward based upon plans and commitments that we've made over the past few decades. And I have to say that with the exception of one of the rating agency's personnel, there was only that person that had visited Norfolk in the past, and she hadn't been here in 12 years. We had great weather and we were very pleased to be able to take them around and show them the city. We picked them up at the airport. We took them through the Lake Wright Executive Center, which was the former ballpark, showed them a development opportunity that we've got at Lake Wright East, took them down Kempstil Road, Morse Pond Bridges, water treatment facility, past the new Centerra Lee expansion, put them on light rail, put them into downtown that way, talked about all the great things that have come along with transit-oriented development, had our presentations at the Dominion Enterprises Building, put them back on light rail to the medical center, and from there took the tour around the city to show them, ending up at East Beach and then back to the airport in time for their flights. It was a terrific tour, and I think the presentations on all the city team members went very well. This is a sampling of the strategic development sites currently being marketed by the Development Department. Wanted to show that, in essence, these are both private and public sites where we know that there's some development potential and opportunity, along with those stars being, representing new businesses in the city that we've been working with in the recent past, the new businesses, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Riverside Lofts, Waters Edge, Wells Fargo, Urban Outfitters, Phoenix Restaurant, the Renova Center, which is the former Gens Center crossing the Opera House, West Alney Road, Stella Cafe, Northern Tool, Mermaid Winery, O'Connor Brewery, and then development sites where we do have the potential to put together some opportunities for development. One of the things that we've done that I think is a directive of the city administration that is new since my taking over as the interim chair, is to take what had been in the real estate department, a hard copy of our real estate assets, and to take them and put them into a condition that would represent, for example, a C.B. Richard Ellis type of marketing flyer, put them online so that they would be available to anybody that wants to look at Norfolk assets and properties. They have the ability then to click on that site and go straight down and take a look at everything that we've got and what that looks like from an aerial perspective, a legal description, and all the size of those parcels, where they're located, and have as professional a package as what the commercial real estate world puts out, but available on our website. It's probably going to take another month and a half for us to complete transition of that hard copy to an online ability to do that.
Chuck, right there, that's, you know, we've been through a little discussion about what's available, and that means that any piece of property that we have in our city that could potentially be developed, somebody could go to that website and communicate with y'all about, I mean, they may not want to do what we want to do, but they would be available to any site, anybody.
That's right.
Any site that was potentially developed.
Yes, sir, and...
I wish we'd already been there, but I'm glad we're getting there.
Well, you know, this is about three weeks ago Daryl Hill and I met and had put this, actually I have the hard copy book with me. It breaks it down into what are basically the gem lots. We're not going to mess with those in development, but we do have both city-owned parcels, city-owned leased or leased, and properties that we lease. We want to know what all those things are, want to make them available, but in particular, we want to make them available in the same kind of quality format that a C.B. Richard Ellis or any...
Do you have surplus school buildings on there too?
I would love to have the surplus school buildings.
There are.
Yeah, some of the discussion earlier about the Broad Creek opportunity, I know that both the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Williams knows that retail is missing in that quadrant, and we need the ability to cobble together a site assembly that would give us the ability in development to go out, and I have a graph in here that I'll show you, that basically shows that there is a need for that in that particular location.
Where's the Stewart School?
In what location?
Well, just in the Broad Creek area in general. You know, the Stone Bridge Crossing, Broad Creek, all the new housing and the new development that's taken place there is beginning to be able to show that we could support community retail. It's not that necessarily Janif is too far away, but the time and hassle factor for those residents to get there at times, love to see a drugstore, community-based grocery, and some of the other additional retail development that I think might, might be able to come into that area with the ability to have a site that would be of enough size to help us out with that.
We've been talking about the same site for seven years, eight years. We've been talking about the same 17 acre site, the same site that we've been putting money aside to acquire critical pieces of property that's less than a half, less than a quarter of a mile from the light rail station. So the site is there. We just need the commitment from development or administration to continue, I mean, we have money and a budget.
Sure.
And we've been trying to acquire critical pieces. We've acquired the Bobcat Place. We worked with NRHA, they got four and a half acres on the backside of it. So we've already identified the site, we've done a market study. So we understand what the site is. So, you know...
It's making a case in the development world that we now have the ability to do a deal for a retail development. Question is, what can we put there? Who would the anchors be? And who would be the developer? So I don't disagree with you. I think we do need that.
My, my, back it up. My concern is property that we have, why, did you say we will put schools on there?
The former school sites are in the listing that Chuck...
They will be.
They are in the listing. They are working.
I'm talking about when we're going to put online, so somebody says Stewart School and he's, he can access and say, yeah, we could renovate that before, whatever.
Yes, sir.
Said, everything is potentially available.
From a commercial perspective?
Yeah, from, yeah, from...
Commercial, right.
Yeah, because those schools are not...
Back to your point, we're not buying anything else in Broad Creek.
Oh, yes, we are.
We want, we want...
I'll let you guys figure that out.
You're done, you're done, okay?
That's why I got a tip.
You got a what?
A tip.
We can evade that.
I'm going to work until the cows come home.
This slide shows you some of the things, this is just about 45. There is quite a more extensive list, but these are projects from the retention and expansion standpoint. One of the things that in coming in a few months ago that we really had discussed with the city manager was that we are getting back to blacking and tackling on the smaller projects, retention and expansion. Let's get back out in the community and see what we can do to reach out and touch anybody that's either wanting to come into the city, but in particular, those folks that are already here to help them with their retention and their expansion. And these are a list of companies and projects that we've been working with. Wanted to be able to show you today a sampling of those, and that they are, as you can see, pretty well diverse and spread out throughout the city.
Chuck, how much time does your office spend on looking at national retailers that are, don't have a presence in Hampton Roads or even in Virginia? I'll give you an example, Wegmans, which is moving south. They're in Northern Virginia now, and we have land, you know, and Military Circle is hurting right now. There's possibility. Do you have staff that's dedicated at looking at places like Wegmans? I know there's Trader Joe's, but we've got two in the area now, so why look for Trader Joe's when there's other places out there that we could be going after?
Yes, sir, we do. We do go after national retailers, both at the International Council of Shopping Centers, which is held every May in Las Vegas, but in addition to that, we've developed over the years a list of those developers and those grocery chains that could either come in and take a look at our market or that we might be able to convince to come up and take a look at our market. Part of the problem is when groceries are making those decisions, it's just not a question of one store. They've got to come in with the ability to supply and grow. One example of that is Kroger, for example, in coming in now to the market and looking at doing a new concept store of 123,000 square feet. They'd like to have five Southampton Road stores. Those are the opportunities that hadn't existed until just recently. New concept for Kroger, they're very well-funded. We'd love to have an opportunity to show them around a couple of sites in Norfolk. But in addition to that, yes, on the Wegmans side, we've been in touch with Wegmans. There's another group that's out of Asheville, North Carolina, that we've been working with and others that we can take, should come into the Hampton Roads marketplace and Norfolk. These are the tools that we use in terms of assisting in our economic development. Obviously, we can use land. We don't have cash, so we sometimes leverage the value of properties, infrastructure and public amenities, performance-based grants, the real estate tax payment programs, commercial facade programs. I'd like to expand some of the commercial facade programs working to see how we might be able to make the case for those facade improvement programs. The EDA can issue industrial revenue bonds. We have special districts with our historically underutilized business zone, the enterprise zone, TIF zones, state and federal programs and incentives that we leverage, the historic rehabilitation tax credits which are available through the state and federal government, Governor's Opportunity Fund on large projects at the discretion of the governor. We can ask for and receive assistance, in particular for large-scale employer opportunities, workforce services and retraining tax credits which are available for the Virginia Department of Business Assistance. And then we work with the SBA, the Small Business Administration, on many loan programs and other kinds of programs that they might be able to help us tell small businesses how to become more successful and what might be available from those SBA programs to grow small business.
Chuck, excuse me. I kind of want to piggyback off of what Tommy asked in that, for example, when we found out that Costco is leaving, was someone from your office in contact with Costco to say, okay, if we can't change their mind, then how can, we'd like to work to find a replacement for that site? Same thing for Sears in Military Circle. We find out Sears is leaving. Since we have these connections in the shopping center conference or what have you, how can we work with the Galleria Management in New York to easily change out Sears when they're gone and not have that downtime in that location? Because that's a hunk of space out there now that's going to be vacant, along with everything else that's vacant out there. What are you guys doing when you find out that these major pieces of retail are leaving to try to make a transition with the other contacts that you have to say, hey, maybe we didn't have the space three years ago in a shopping center? But guess what, guys? Sears is leaving, and we're interested in entertaining, making this transition from Sears to Kohl's or whatever it may be.
Well, it's an excellent question, and let me answer the first part of that. We have been in touch with Costco and have been for several years. There has been no definitive date of closure of that store. There's no question that as they have almost every single year, because that is their second oldest store on the East Coast, former Prices, that, and as their demographic continues to show membership sliding to the east, which is Virginia Beach, that we have been continually asking them about how we might be able to perhaps either keep two stores or work with them as they take a look at what the possibilities for expansion on that site are. I've been in touch with senior-level Costco executives. We remain in touch, and there has been no definitive date in terms of when and if that final decision is going to be reached. There's no question that all their indicators are showing where they need to be, and if I was to guess in terms of their strategies, it would be to have a store in Virginia Beach and one out in 664 Quarter. Those are hard numbers that they're looking at, but we have not given up on that. Let me address the Military Circle area in particular. About three weeks ago, we did have From New York, Thor Equities ownership come down and meet with the development team and talk about challenges that are upcoming there at Military Circle and what they see, what we might be able to do to assist them in the repositioning of Military Circle. It's challenging because there are multiple types of ownerships in terms of, some of the retailers own the dirt that they're under, some of them own just the structure. That hotel, which is closed, is not Thor Equities, but it's a whole other group. So we've got challenges related to trying to find a user to take over what had been three-quarters of the way through a renovation project when the money ran out. And so it's a very challenging area. In addition to Military Circle, we're also looking at how do we transition Best Square in that area into a higher and better use? And you'll see that the old motel and the great steak are coming down. The ability to join those two sites up is very good. We met with Laramore Organization, which owns that property two weeks ago, sat down with them and talked about what we would be willing to do to partner with them to bring a new and better day. Great site, they've got a couple of folks in mind, we've got a couple of folks in mind. So to the end though, that we have identified the need and the challenges out there, we're also in July having Urban Land Institute come in with a technical advisory panel, which we are funding for a one-day panel to take a look in specifically 264 down Virginia Beach Boulevard or Military Highway to Virginia Beach Boulevard over to Kempstil Road. So we're working on getting together and not waiting, but being aggressively going after. How do we reposition that whole area?
Can you let me know when that happens?
Absolutely, sure.
And depending that, Marcus, can we get somebody to meet with the people who now own the hotel and all to make sure that that site is safe from a code standpoint? There's a school over there where children walk back and forth, and it is just a haven for drug activity, prostitution, and anything else that could happen over there. A kid could get hurt or snatched or anything. So even though they're in demolition, they still need to be co-compliant and safe.
Chuck, just on the Costco issue, it's my understanding, isn't there a similar competitor of Costco's that has a better frontage on the Janif side? Is BJ's over there?
BJ's, but you know, the interesting thing is, you know, you make an excellent point. In the past years, we looked at, could we identify, for example, Best Square site as a place for Costco?
Right.
Enhance their visibility.
Because I mean, it's my understanding, BJ's came later. They were originally at the beach. So I mean, you have to look at, you know, some things are just market force, and it's just, that's just, we eat it as it is. So when you have the idea Costco was there for a long period of time, it's an older store, and it has basically no, I guess, no frontage in the sense of visibility sightlines.
But everybody knows where Costco is.
It doesn't matter. It really does, it does, I don't think that's the issue, in that you know where it is. Not everybody does. We're a fairly transient area at times. So then, now you compound the fact that BJ's came in, which, you know, I think we've forgotten, there is no discussion on that. BJ's came in, it was originally at the beach down on the boulevard, they've moved into the Janif area, which is a competitor of Costco's. And Costco may be now be playing as their market forces are, that they've got to go to the beach where BJ's began. Not to say that Costco does not come back, but I get it, and, you know...
Well, here's the interesting thing about...
I think we just need to work, we need to leverage what we can. But I think we forgot the upside of where we were with what's happened with BJ's coming in Janif. So you can always look at what's going wrong, but don't forget that upside.
Just as much as the Sands Club could come in and put BJ's out of business.
Right, yeah, it's just, some things are just market forces, and we just have to, we have to understand that. We can't control everything.
We can support both.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. The sales revenues are great at the store. Where Costco makes their money, interestingly enough, is on memberships, and that's what they're seeing and where their memberships are coming from, is what is really driving the hard back behind that serious look around. I know I'm probably taking up more time than I should. Our department menu of services is available. These are things that we're working with businesses and site consultants. These are the things that they're asking us for, research profiles, site selection assistance, demographic profiles, retail leakage reports. All these things are what we do in terms of trying to make both existing businesses and other businesses that might want to come in in Norfolk and providing assistance from our department in each of these particular areas. These are our commercial corridors, and this is through a new resource that I approved just recently, Buxton Scout Retail Lease Track. Very good, solid information, some of it's hard in terms of, you need to know where you are in order to know where you're going to go, and we need to have an outside analytical look at where our strengths and weaknesses are. You can see super-regional centers for retail. You do have the Janif Military Circle area still showing, super-regional at 800,000-plus square feet, along with our MacArthur Center. And then you can see, again, in green, community centers, the regionals in blue, which is the Super Kmart, and then the neighborhood centers where we're focusing and needing to take a look at how do we enhance the small retail experience in our business commercial corridors? And that's something that we're getting really good, solid information on now that we can base it on when we go out and talk to folks about infilling either opportunities in the smaller areas or in some of the more challenging areas of sites. This is something I'm very proud about as well. We are moving toward an employee Norfolk kickoff, and we are going to be doing the civilian side of workforce development. And in particular, we are making great strides and progress in terms of the, it's your turn employee Norfolk opportunity, and I don't know whether, can I touch this?
I think it's on the right.
You're the only one that's touched it, he didn't. He didn't do a blank.
Well, it's not going to...
Let's see if...
It's on the smart board.
Well, on our Norfolkdevelopment.com website, we have, I don't know whether we've got that available, but on our website, we have a page that's devoted specifically to workforce development. It has a hyperlink to all the available resources in workforce development. What these two videos are, I really do wish we could pop them open.
Can she just click it on the computer screen? Can you click on it?
Come on, Mark, show her how to do it.
We can pull the link up and I can just read it too. Just take another minute of y'all's time, but this is something that is a new initiative. We know that in the construction industry, in the healthcare industry, and in the shipbuilding and ship repair business in particular, there's plenty of jobs, but what our Norfolk residents don't have is the skill sets necessary to fill those jobs. So in taking on the challenge of workforce development, what we have to do is move Norfolk residents into these kinds of programs that are available and try to assist them in getting the kind of skill sets they need. And if you could, down there a little bit, up a little, right here on it's your turn, read more. All right, now this is our website or our page for workforce training, and you can see that it talks about everything that we're doing. And then over on the right-hand side, we've got workforce training downloads, the state of the workforce, the Virginia Employment Commission data, Regent Military Transition Workforce Development Studies. That is an important other element. We do civilian, the mayor and the manager have taken on as well the returning veterans and the veterans unemployment issue, and I think there's going to be some good news very shortly announced on that, and there's going to be a person that's going to be devoted toward specifically assisting veterans to find gainful employment, transitioning from the military side of the house into the civilian jobs. And if you could click on the first one there, watch this video. This is a draft, and this is something that Sarah Parker has come up with, and this kind of, again, this is a work in progress and it's kind of, we have to find a better way to reach out.
Well, if it ain't one thing, it's gonna be another. Don't you know I'm moving up? I thought I told you. I don't know who's gonna get in my way.
Good.
Well, if it ain't one thing, it's gonna be another. Don't you know I'm moving up? I thought I told ya. I don't know who's gonna get in my way. But if I know one thing, I know I'm right when I say I'm moving up. One, two, and a place to be. Basically, we need a new place to be. Gotta move, find us a big ol' house, babe. Kick the city, baby, let's roll out. A lotta weight on my shoulders. How can I lift that? Fall through the roof, I can fix that. Is that a big cap? Or it's a raccoon? I can fix that, just give me a boot. I know one day things will get better. Do it down there. Hope we stay together. When it comes to the fam, I'll do whatever it takes. It's up to me to set it straight. No matter how many bones I gotta break, I'ma make that chandelier levitate. Working hard from daybreak to sunset. Are we done yet? Well, if it ain't one thing, it's gonna be another. Don't you know I'm moving up? I thought I told ya. I don't know who's gonna get in my way. But if I know one thing, I know I'm right when I say I'm moving up. Still in a place to be. Let the beat get a little bit of taste in me. I just need a crib with decked-out decor. Moving on up there, I never breathed before. We're trying to live the life that one we never had. It takes a little work, but it's not so bad. We got fresh, clean air and a beautiful view. Baby on the way, so we gotta make it through. This is something that we'll never forget. But we wonder, honey, are we done yet? Well, if it ain't one thing, it's gonna be another. Don't you know I'm moving up? I thought I told ya. I don't know who's gonna get in my way. But if I know one thing, I know I'm right when I say I'm moving up. I'm moving up. I'm moving up.
To get Norfolk residents into these opportunities and then measure that out. I don't know whether we have time, but... Well, on the other one...
That's all, Chuck. Can I ask you how you, do you have a plan for how you're going to get this information out there? Is it going to be advertising television, or is it going to be going into public schools?
Well, we're all three, and you're absolutely right. We now need to take this out. We have basically three sectors. The emerging workforce, which are students, we need to go into Norfolk Public School Systems, into our universities, and make sure that they're aware of what these programs are. We have on our webpage a lot of that good information on where you can go to get those things. But in terms of getting out our marketing message, we'll be doing advertising. We'll be working with Bob Batchery and everybody else in terms of trying to really enhance it and get out that message to as many people as we can. The other one is a very cutting-edge, BAE Systems allowed Lori Crouch and Sarah to work together on a very short clip. This guy is actually in his 70s, and he talks about It's Your Turn Norfolk. He's got a young apprentice that's in this very short video clip that basically says, I'm learning how to get a trade that gives me a gainful employment, a career opportunity. I think the message of the short clips that we're going to be doing in healthcare, construction, and shipbuilding is that these are really good jobs and that we need to move more numbers of Norfolk residents, whether they're in Huntington Ingalls Shipyard or anywhere, as long as they're Norfolk residents that are getting gainful employment opportunities in the emerging unemployed and underemployed, then we'll be doing our job. So sorry, I took a...
Since 1936, BAE Systems, right here in Norfolk, has been providing on-the-job training. Well, that tradition continues just as strong today, right across the Elizabeth River. We're 155...
...job after age 12 and...
It said, well, it starts with to increase wealth for the city. And I'm just thinking, if I were a business, I would want to know what your first mission would be to, what you're going to do for me. I understand that you want to create wealth for the city and bring jobs to the city and bring business to the city, but if I'm looking to come to you, I'm looking at what can you do for me? So maybe that should be revamped to be more business-user friendly, to be more outreaching to the business community instead of, it looks like our number-one goal is just to make money. And so it needs to maybe look like our goal is to bring you to a great place where we have a wonderful workforce and we have a highly-trained workforce, and we have the tools to help you succeed, and we have the tools to help you grow your business. And in the process, we'll...
You're right. And the one area I don't want us to forget, the, at the Ward's Corner area, the Workforce Development Center, that lease has an option that comes due at some point, 2015. We don't, we cannot forget that option as we look at the capital improvement plan. That is something that we can, if it comes in, we can spin it right back out with an RFP. We don't want to lose the opportunity to work that. So if we could just keep that at some point, I know 2015 seems far away, but three years out, if we bring it in and pop it right back out, and that's something that we don't have the inventory for a long time. If we exercise our option, and it's a feasible option, and makes financial sense on behalf of the city, and we can RFP that out and get rid of it and get that back on tax rolls, we don't want to keep it as our own, then that could just, that's another development in that area three years down the road. So thanks. I just want to make sure we...
Chuck, I mean, Mark, you got a question? When we get this website, all the properties on the website, we need to market it to at least at the road that's there and access it, and I guess some site even to the public, some kind of public relations, or somebody to say, come by Norfolk, and this is a way you can find out what might be available. So we don't want it to be a secret.
And it's got to be user-friendly, too. I mean, you can't, eight clicks to get there, because people will click off after the second one.
Absolutely right.
Anthony, Chuck.
I got three, well, I guess comments more so than questions. You know, looking at the number of internships that you've talked about there, you got a population of people that we talked about in the earlier meeting that you could concentrate on in terms of Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority. If you concentrated on, again, you're talking about Norfolk citizens, where you have the captive audience of the folk that they deal with every day, people who are looking for gainful employment, people who are looking for housing, and people that are looking for upward mobility. I think that that's an area in terms of understanding that. It's great that you talk about all the, you know, how would people get into the internships? How much money does it cost to get it? If there's a cost associated with it? The level of training outside the internship, where they provide gainful employment at the end of the internship? Also, you have the homeless, or you have the working people that, what I call the working homeless, I mean, people that are, that are working every day, that are staying in hotels or what have you, that are also looking for opportunities for upward mobility or these types of programs that you have put out there. So I would just hope that you would take the opportunity to capture the captive audience in terms of Norfolk citizens. I mean, that's easy said than done, but once you put the cast in net, I don't believe that you can discriminate and say, well, you're not a Norfolk resident, and you can't be a part of this program. And so I just think that because we have a target audience, I would make every effort in reaching the population of Norfolk citizens that you can by dealing with the various agencies and getting that information to them. Secondly, I would say that I would hope that you would concentrate more on city land that belongs to the city for development opportunities rather than the malls. And I say that to say simply, they have people who they pay daily to do just what you talk about doing for them. They pay people to go out and to find these anchors to come in and fill those voids. We're still going to get taxes from that real estate, whether people leave before their lease expires or whatever. But at the end of the day, I would hope that our, when we begin to prioritize our efforts, that we would look at our development opportunities to put properties that are not on the tax rolls back on the tax rolls. And at some point, like I said, it would be nice to know who's responsible for what areas, whether it be Ward's Corner, or whether it be Broad Creek, or whether it be downtown. It would be nice to be able to hold someone accountable in terms of going out there and spurring development. And I'll say this, and this frustrates me to no end, because, you know, I've been, I'm going to give you this board, so it won't be any misconception about the work that we've done for the last nine years in Broad Creek, establishing where the commercial and retail hub is, okay? And I went through that whole process with Rod, you know, and had a market study done, and gently and respectfully pushed the book across the table to him to let him know that that community has passed a point where it can sustain commercial and retail development at the highest level. We've been working on our formula as it relates to rooftops. And so this map will show you the areas that we have agreed as a consensus in terms of where our commercial and retail hub is, as well as our recreation and educational hub is. And so I would hope that I'll get that to the Economic Development Department as a whole. So if you can help us, I would be most appreciative, you know, because we've been working on this a long time. And Barclay, as long as breath in my back, we're going to push money over there.
I've brought this up before, and I don't know if the city's ever acted on it. Back when Paula Miller was a delegate, she had sent information about the new defense contractor zones and that, you know, just kind of like the enterprise zones, but mainly for defense. You know, we have some corridors, and it just came up last night, I was over in the Larry Moore area, and the Civic League is very concerned about the properties located on Military Highway north of the airport. And that they're just dead. I mean, and with Super Kmart, not knowing what's going to happen with that site, you know, there's an opportunity there to bring in some more private colleges on those sites because, you know, it's a narrow strip, so you can't put too much retail there. There's opportunities even for some hotels, because if you have defense contractors coming in and looking over there, also some opportunities for more types of industry dealing with defense. You know, we should be going after that and trying to create a new zone over in that area. It's close to the airport. You could get some retail that will develop around that, some restaurants, if you're able to do that. We have the land, and I know they're private properties, but, you know, car dealerships are moving out, and, you know, we have affordable housing over in that area as well. I just think we're missing out on the opportunity to try to take advantage of the governor's, you know, and the General Assembly when they put that initiative through, and trying to designate that area zones and some other parts of the city, you know, to be able to get defense contractors in here. If we want to attract these military, right, we want to make this a great place for our military, this is an opportunity for that. Marcus, do we have anybody working on the zones for that? I mean, Brian, you're going to have to fill me in. I don't remember. I tried to pull it up in my email. I have it saved, but it doesn't let me pull up that old email. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Tommy, the area, I mean, on Military Highway, I just drove it yesterday.
The bowling alley's gone, you know, the flea market, yeah.
Well, from, really, the entrance to Bromley, which was the old Tyler Dodge. From there all the way down to, I guess, Charlie Fox, which is McKendry Methodist Church, that whole area is, in fact, I saw for sale signs. So if it's for sale, maybe that's something that we could pair with them. And it is very close to the airport. It's within literally under five minutes by car.
Yes, absolutely.
It's two traffic lights, even if you go through traffic lights. You can cut through Bromley, only have one.
Well, can I respectfully say, can we deal with all the stuff that we got on the table now?
What do you mean?
I mean, I say that to say that, you know, we sat around some years ago, and we talked about these five neighborhood plans, whatever. And in some instances, we're no closer to completing some of the work that we've been working on for five or six, seven, eight years. Then we continue to add to it, and we then neglect some of those other areas that we had a original commitment to, and nothing else, nothing ever gets truly completed, or some of those other projects get pushed further behind. So I would just like to see what you guys brought Ward's Corner to the table, that added another project some years ago, few years ago.
That was on the table before you were on council.
Well, no, you could have spent money there, but you spent it all in East Beach. So again, you spent $100 million. I tell the story, you know. And like I said, now, there was no money going into War III, okay, before I got on council, when we started looking at how the power was being sliced. And we get a general consensus in terms of the projects that are on the table, those projects that need to be completed or brought closure to. But we continue to open another Pandora's Box, and we don't get any closer to the finish line. We've got all of these projects open, but nothing that's completed, nothing that we could, well, some do get closer to completion than others. But what I'm saying is this is to be respectful, you know.
You don't want to dilute the energy.
That's all I'm trying to say. I don't want to spread it.
Anthony, with all due respect, I was asking for us to go after some more opportunity to get development in areas. I don't think you want defense contractors setting up shop in Broad Creek.
Ain't gonna happen.
All right. We're looking at other areas, and there's an opportunity that the General Assembly has made available to get some more, just like the enterprise zone, but just primarily for defense contractors. That's what I was bringing, I don't want to steal any way any of your funding, the millions of dollars were put in the Broad Creek is very important.
And I wasn't even talking about spending any money. I was just saying, let's market it. If it's already for sale, let's help them market it through the city. That's all I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, but all I'm saying to you is that we got enough boxes open, you know, in terms of things that we need to do, that needs the immediate attention, in terms of telling development that, now, I want you to look at this, 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 and this, but yet we still want them to, I just don't think we have the manpower. And I know that you want those things that you've identified to get done, as well as the things that you've identified and those review you would like to see get done. And so that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that, you know, that move money, move money here. I'm just trying to be respectful of the administration and say that we can't be all things to all people. And so let's concentrate on what we have. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Sandy, that comments?
Sorry, Sandy, I stole all your time. It's all right. How much time do I have?
Take as much time as you need. We're not going anywhere. I was going to ask, I'm at 8:00.
Well, I could talk fast.
Frank, you might have to order dinner.
What I...
It's weird for him.
You know what I thought?
You do know you can talk fast.
What I thought we do today, we have a formal presentation, which we'll go through relatively quickly. Most of you see some of this before. And then we have some add-ons, and I think some exciting news to bring to your attention also, and then we'll open it up for further discussion from there, if that's okay. So the formal presentation is just, we're going to focus on the mission. We need to talk, last time, we had some issues about our revenues, that those that have been reported have been resolved, and talk about upcoming bond issuance from September. You know, we'll talk a bit about transportation. I feel very strongly, I'll get to that, I feel very strongly that jobs are great, housing's great, but you got to get from one place to another. And I think there's an opportunity within the city of Norfolk, we can demonstrate that, one, we're the leader in the state. So we're quite excited about that. Okay, the mission of the EDA, our bullet points, it is, one, and we'll talk a little bit about what we try to do, create jobs, maximize utilization of our real estate, foster investment, increase revenue by growing our tax base, focus on efforts to build the strengths and the deeds of our neighborhoods, and lastly, support, but not, lastly, but not, certainly not least, support minority-owned, women-owned, and small businesses. That's very much part of that bullet point also. Okay, our primary role is, where does the revenue come? Our role is the issuance of bonds for nonprofits and for-profit capital projects, followed by support of the city's development effort. We got issuing bonds. Our next role is basically to provide what I call loans, M-U-C-I-P-P loans, grants. Where we, example of that is with the Light Rail, tied was being built through downtown Norfolk. A number of businesses received loans to tie them through that loss of business tie. time, time, time. For example, some people could not catch the businesses, so we loaned them money to get through that difficult time.
Were there zero interest loans?
No, small, no, they bought a single-digit, low-single-digit. As well as the EDA also, our revenue supports the department operations also. Okay, our revenue bonds, we receive fees for bonds that are issued. Okay, I have an example right here in my hand. This is a agreement, basically. This is Centerra bond issuance, it's all in here, this one here was raising a hundred and thirty-one million dollars, Centerra. Norfolk was issued through our department, okay? We receive fees from the interest, that is, the interest that Centerra pays, okay? That provided last year, our budget for this year, we received, from those fees, we received, or projected received this year, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, okay? That's the revenue that comes in. Any questions on that? That is our sole source of revenue. That was, we had here, that last time we were here, that four hundred and sixty thousand dollars was under attack, in a fashion. The Virginia Small Business Finance Authority out of Richmond was also had the ability to do the exact same thing that we did. And they were allowing large not-for-profits to issue bonds through that state agency, therefore competing against the cities of Virginia. After, I made a couple trips to Richmond with then-Rod Willard, we met with other EDAs and the small business SBFA representatives in Williamsburg, year and a half, about a year, a year and a half ago. And.
A year ago?
And, that, big story short, we have a good answer. We reached an agreement. Here's pretty much where it is. For two years, the Virginia Small Business Authority will notify impacted locality, for example, let's say Norfolk, of a pending bond issuance. Fee structure will now be capped at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The previous cap was seventy-five thousand dollars. If the VSBFA is the issuer, we get forty percent of those fees. If the, this is important, important to present, if the local EDA is the issuer, the Norfolk EDA, we don't share those fees with the VSBFA. It's in place for two years, and we have signed off on this, as have pretty much every other EDA. Brian, have I pretty much summarized that correctly?
Yes, sir. A significant part of the capping the fees, what we saw in 2007 with the change of eligible business, meaning that these larger nonprofits were able to qualify for these loans, is that you couldn't collect any more than seventy-five thousand dollars of that given year, which, if you went with the VSBFA, the incentive is on these large issuances to go there so that they could avoid paying the fees that the EDA, over-EDA would collect, because we didn't have a cap in place. So now we are normalizing of the two, to kind of essentially put us on par. And briefly, we worked with Virginia Municipally, we had great support from Senator Norman, Tommy Normant really came to the call. Williamsburg was a member of our Coalition of Concerned Localities. What we saw here happening was that the state was in direct competition with the local EDAs, competing for the same funds, and we were moving in partnership with VML and a few other interested localities to impose a legislative remedy that would essentially close the door. It became very clear to us that that probably wasn't going to be possible, working through the legislative process. And with concurrence with the Norfolk EDA, Virginia VGDA, and a few others, we moved forward with the deal that's articulated here by.
I wanna mention, the coordination of our EDA with the Virginia VGDA and other state EDAs was outstanding. We had good communication, a lot of good relationships were built up, a lot of meetings, we had a lot of meetings. This was, this could've really impacted our city using this four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Yes.
The housing authorities still can issue bonds?
Yes.
Under what circumstance might they issue it that you got?
Depends on the purpose.
The purpose, okay.
It's a purpose.
This is, I know we talked about it later, but this is a state agency?
Yes.
That was competing with the local agency.
They set up a state.
They've always had.
To come compete with the cities who they cut, they short on every other.
They stuck something in a building in 2002, 2003, this thing was stuck in there. It's brought us with one large not-for-profit's intention that they could do this. And the way they got their attention was the fee was substantially less than what we were charging.
They were charging a lower fee than the local guys.
They were taking money right out of.
And so we were competing with the state.
Just another way to slice.
So, now it's got.
The good news, it's been resolved. The good news.
Temporarily resolved.
Two years. But the better news is this, is that the large not-for-profits understand how this works now, understand the advantages that they have by keeping the revenues within our city. They understand that every time they do an expansion, there's demand upon our roads, upon our fire departments, upon our police force, again.
Great selling job.
So we've done that, I think a lot of good work was done, a lot of communication was done. And this situation, in my opinion, is resolved. Going forward, we have, proof of the podium is we have large pending bond issuance coming up from Centerra, surrounding the Lee Hospital expansion, okay?
Because Centerra is one of those folks who are going to the state, because they have a lot, this is great stuff.
Centerra was told about this, Centerra didn't go to the state, they were told about this. Communication, it's important to follow the communication of this issue, okay? They were told that they had this ability to do it, so there's a communication, good communication, if it got resolved. Two other things real fast, at the last meeting, we talked about our meetings. We meet the fourth Wednesday of each month, about where we held our meetings. We had our last meeting up at Ocean View, the library, at lunchtime. Anybody's always welcome those meetings.
I heard you were very proud of that.
Yes, I was. We also had lunch, we had also plenty of food left over too.
Be careful, you have to get a Broad Creek now.
That's fine, we'll be at Broad Creek, we'll take the light, and we'll take the tide out there.
I gotta get you a place to host it, Ted.
Your house.
Last piece, I think this is important too. It's boards, I think all boards, each have themes, you need to stay on themes and stay focused. This board continues to focus very strongly on transportation. We have a wonderful city, we gotta get people, just to your question, why do you want to come to Norfolk? We have the best transportation center network of any other city in Virginia. We have the tide, the warmth. Come this fall, you can have Amtrak train that comes here. And we talked about the potential success, we've been looking at the Portland, Maine examples. Maine has a total population of a million one, the greater Portland population is about two hundred thousand. We swapped those numbers. They have five trains a day totally full, and development around those cities, around those stations in Maine are phenomenal. Best economic development, in my opinion, is developing transit-oriented development around these stations. And why? Because basically, the second largest expense for any family is a car. If you can bring a worker into Norfolk and say, your workers only need one car.
Passionate about this.
But you know what, why, we shouldn't be laughing about this.
We appreciate your.
You know what, the numbers are there. Stop, I'm hurt. I'm totally deflated right here, I'm gonna get my car and drive home.
But you ride the two with me, I know you do ride.
I do, I rode it yesterday, where were you?
They knew you were gonna end on transportation then.
I did, well, that's pretty much it, I have a lot, we can talk a lot about that, but we just, sensitive to Tommy, we had a lot of good discussion today. We do meet, everyone, in terms of, here, right now, given the state, the financial situation is stabilizing, we have basically, many not-for-profits in the city come to us for grants. We've put those on hold for the time being, primarily till we see where we are with regard to our revenue stream. And so, they're currently on hold, of course, that position is continually under review. We did do, I can happily report that Virginia Symphony borrowed money from the EDA, and they've been extremely timely in paying us back, so I'm very proud, that's what's going on.
Stage company?
Honestly, the last five years, we've given EVMS twenty-five thousand, Hope House ten thousand, gave money for the Nightingale twenty-five thousand in Centerra, Art of Glass thirty thousand, this is five years now, Union Mission twenty-five thousand, Douglas MacArthur expansion fifty thousand, Sale Virginia sixty-six thousand, Spotlight Books thirty-two thousand, Grant WHRO five thousand, Botanical Gardens twenty-five thousand, the Zoo seventy-five thousand for their expansion there, the schooner, this is a number of years ago, under thousand, and High Speed Rail Initiative, which is the pack up in Richmond, thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. I'd like to add just one second, thanks, Sandy. He's the one that's made a vow through negotiation with Centerra, that it was parking well on the.
Yes.
End of light rail. That's huge for people on the side to be able to park and get around.
It's critical HRT coordinates with these profits, it's obvious to me.
Any other questions, anybody? Comments, thoughts?
What were we gonna mention about the expanding the EDA to eleven?
Yeah, there are seven members, actually, the Economic Development Authority is created by the state, or its membership is determined by the Commonwealth. And so, there are eleven members, for instance, I think, at the beach. There are a number of localities that have larger memberships than seven. And we talked about increasing the membership so we could draw on more of our business community, but also areas of, you know, membership in the board that would include maybe somebody from the port, somebody from the military, I mean, we'd have to look through, we haven't come up with an exact list, but just, you know, to get more expertise on the board, and to get more community involvement in it. And so, the governor, as soon as they break loose this budget jam, would you say, Brian? That the governor starts signing all these bills, it should take effect July first. As far as we know, Roanoke at the same time was expanding their boards, we got to piggyback on their bill. A lot of the boards were expanding across the Commonwealth, so, we're right up there, so.
Give you some more information.
I would like to say that, you know, in recent months, it's great to see the communication between Economic Development Authority and the Development Department and the City Council actually coming together a lot better. You know, it gives everybody a better chance to sort of be advocates for each other, when you know a little more about what's going on, instead of waiting until the last minute. So I just wanna say, I think there's been some great improvement in the beginning of the transparency of information, and I think it's been an asset to the board so far, so.
Great. Okay.
It's a great comment.
It is, being an alum from Norfolk State, I was proud of the university for getting the bid to the NCAA, and representing the university well, as well as the city, because the city of Norfolk, the name I mentioned, thousands of times, ESPN.
Tell us different ways.
Let's get them to City Hall.
And I was gonna ask the council that at the very end, how they, what the thought was, about how we acknowledge that. We could bring them all, try to get them down here next Tuesday evening, and have an appropriate resolution, and, does everybody think that's all right?
Yeah.
Okay, we did that for Old Dominion on a couple of occasions, but this is really a huge step forward for Norfolk State, but also for the city. And the young folks handed themselves so well.
Yeah.
And they said so many nice things about the city and the community, and I mean, they really felt like they were representing all of us, I mean, it was really something.
I agree.
So, we'll get them in here Tuesday. What we have to do is, you know, contact Dr. Atwater, and then, you know, Marty, and see if the coach will bring their team down here. We can provide buses or whatever we need to do. Maybe we'll get the band. Maybe they'll bring us some jerseys, maybe we'll go over there.
There's earplugs.
Okay, all right, thanks a lot. Now, if the council has any, you guys, we're finished, if the council has any issues, concerns you might wanna bring up, wanna take just a minute, we'll do that. Okay. Okay, Tanya, that was great, thank you, thanks a lot. Bye, guys. All right, Andy, do you have anything that you wanna add? Okay, I think that is enough. All right, Marcus, you got it? No?
There's been a couple things. One is, has been some, we've been asked maybe to try to help fast track this Ward's Corner and everything, and maybe if we can schedule, April, they scheduled for the planning commission, if we have a joint hearing to help that thing move along faster, help them. Logistically, are there any problems to that or not? The Perry property, the zoning issue.
You know why he wants to?
Get ready to rock and roll, tear it down and move ahead. They request it, I mean, if there's, if there's not a good reason not to, I'd like to see it try to happen.
We've done that in the past, but we've done it when it was very time-sensitive.
I rely on Barclay.
I think they're time-sensitive, but we can ask.
Are they, maybe they're concerned that if they have a planning commission meeting, by the time they get to us, it'll be six weeks or a couple months?
Yeah.
And if we can alleviate the concern, or they can get the planning commission, if they can get to us within a couple of weeks?
Yeah, if we could.
You know, if we can.
Ms. Brown, we can do that, if we bypass the step where we ask for permission to advertise at city council, we could bring it back to city councils very quickly after the planning commission.
However, however you wanna do it, but I think.
I don't wanna do anything that's subject to criticism. I'm getting a little sensitive.
Come on, man.
No, but I mean, however we can do it, as bad as trying, I mean, we've been working on this a long time, we can, we can help, it doesn't cost anything, I'd like to do it.
What Frank is saying, Barclay, is that we save a week by the administration setting the date that it'll come to the council, and it'll have the same notices, but the administration will set the date rather than waiting for the council to do it, and that saves us a week.
Okay.
But if it only saves us a week, I mean, I'd like to be able to, how quickly, when are you scheduled to meet, Frank?
We will be, the planning commission will be looking at this at their meeting in April, the twenty-sixth, and we could have this ready, if we went ahead and planned on the, getting the advertising done for your first meeting in May, it would be the absolute earliest we could get it done. And that's assuming the planning commission does act, that.
Do we meet on the first Tuesday in May? Is that a nice time?
Tuesday in May would be the earliest, because we're gonna need that extra time. Is that budget time, or, you know?
Yeah, it is, but that's.
We're tied up in budgets tonight, I just don't wanna get this thing.
All right, well, why don't we try to schedule a joint meeting then?
I'd like to look at the best.
Actually, I think it's the election day, isn't it?
That's the second.
That's the second.
The first is.
You know, all it is, you just hate to set the precedent, because everybody will then want you to do that, unless there's really a pressing need, but this thing, we don't want it to drag out. So, we'll try to schedule a joint meeting.
The other thing is, looking to maybe having retirees be able to ride the light rail a little more, you know, our employees are, it might be a nice benefit to try to.
It's an election year.
It is an election.
I did ask you about that, Marcus.
You notice the two that are up for election.
How about their children, too?
See what you're talking about, it's a dream, okay?
Their whole families.
How about what?
Their families, too. They'll look into it.
Second dozen, one removed.
Try to help them all.
I think it's, I think it's very laudable, you can put it on your website.
Well, we didn't give them a bonus, and we didn't give them a raise, so at least they can ride light rail for free.
Anything we say that's nice from now on becomes a political statement.
Exactly, it'll go right on your website, you can extract it, put it right up.
Okay, Anthony?
I got a couple things, and, you know, I take this job very seriously, I've been around here almost ten years now, come May. And, you know, when I work on a project, I get invited. I get involved, you know, and I dot I's and I cross T's, and a lot of times I don't shoot off, and I spend a lot of blood, sweat, and equity over in Broad Creek. Here recently, I asked Bernard to give me a timeline on a specific piece of property that we've been trying to acquire. Now, we have money in the Broad Creek budget, I didn't ask money to come from nowhere else, but what I expect at this day and time is, if someone is going to take over Stanley, that they do their due diligence, bring themselves up to speed, and understand the pots of money that we're dealing with. And I've been trying, we've been trying to acquire this property for about eight months, and I get a timeline from Bernard, because it was all pushed on Bernard's office in terms of where, you know, what was the holdout. When I started working on this, it was Randy Ferrari. Now, the timeline I got, it came January, and I've been working on this thing a lot longer than before January. I'm not pointing at you, but what I'm saying is, I don't appreciate people within the administration not telling me the truth, and that's unacceptable. That's unacceptable, okay? Secondly, again, if information is going to be disseminated throughout this body, if there's going to be anything as it relates to a ground breaking or anything, and it comes from our PR or communications person, that means everybody should get a call, not just a certain few, okay? And I don't want an apology after the fact, I want consistency, you know, and I'll speak my mind, I don't need to be no more than that. And the last thing we've been talking about here, we had the meeting, and I guess is out, the cat is out the bag, but again, I do not like to be told things that are not true, okay? Because at the end of the day, my word is all I have when I have to speak to my constituents or anybody else in the city, you know, across the city. And so, when we were in that meeting, you go back, Mr. Winn, and you can look at that telecast as it relates to this particular conversation that we had. You asked the question, where is there any body getting a, was there any broker, or was there any, I believe the word was used, any commissions being paid as it relates to this Chick-fil-A deal?
I asked for the city paying it. Was it net, I asked, was it 800,000 net?
It was told that it was no broker, it was told that we were dealing directly with Chick-fil-A, and now I find out that we're not dealing directly with Chick-fil-A, that we're dealing with another entity, okay? And that other entity, you know, is the one that is negotiating or talking to the city, not Chick-fil-A. I would love to have some clarity as it relates to that, because that's what we were told, okay? And again, this is, and I go back, this is the second issue, that, and we talked about being told, being able to have the proper information to be able to make an informed decision about how we utilize city dollars within this city. I can't make an informed decision if I'm not getting the right information.
The question I asked in response to that, as I recall, and I went back and looked too, was the 800,000 net of any commissions to us, was that, and my answer to my question was yes, that's all been taken care of, that's what we're getting.
We were told that there was no broker, we were dealing directly with Chick-fil-A, that we're dealing with a corporation, we're not dealing directly with the corporation.
I don't know, all I know is that we were getting a net figure without, we're not paying.
We're dealing directly with the corporation.
Yes, sir.
There is no, there is no broker.
Corporate store.
There is no broker.
There is no broker. All the commissions are being paid by Chick-fil-A to anybody that had anything to do with.
But then there's a broker.
But that's.
Don't mix apples, if they're paying commissions to somebody else that we were dealing with, there is a broker.
Whatever Chick-fil-A uses in terms of the assistance and identification of locations, wherever they want to go, is on them, but nobody represented the city of Norfolk in this transaction. We made that clear to Harvey Lindsey.
Nobody what?
Nobody represented the city of Norfolk on the sale of that property. We don't do that.
I didn't say the city of Norfolk, what I said was, was there a third party? I don't say, I don't care who paid them.
We're negotiating directly with Scott Backman, who's directly employed as the real estate manager for Chick-fil-A.
So, what you're saying, Chuck, is that there, Chick-fil-A could have employed, if you will, a third party on their own to identify the land?
That's right.
And they could have done that in any city, in any state, anywhere, to identify the land. And once they, once that entity identified the land, Chick-fil-A could have paid that entity a professional services fee for the work that they did. And then Chick-fil-A says, okay, since you guys identified the land, we're good now. And then Chick-fil-A came directly to the city, who's the owner of the land, and made the deal directly with the city. Is that what you're saying? So, the fact that they could have paid someone to identify is really irrelevant to us, because we're still dealing directly with Chick-fil-A and not some commercial brokerage firm. Is that what I'm, okay?
And when I asked the question, did we make a deal with Chick-fil-A, that's who we made the deal with.
And your answer would still be yes.
With the brokerage company.
Yeah.
We're dealing with Chick-fil-A and had a handshake agreement with Chick-fil-A. Now, if they choose to pay people to consult or whatever, that's their own.
That's totally outside of our realm of whatever.
I'm going to ask the question, Chick-fil-A is buying the land?
Yes, sir.
Okay? And we're dealing exclusively with Chick-fil-A, there is no third party?
In the letter of intent, it states specifically that there is no seller representation.
So, we're, I'm going to say, so we're dealing exclusively with Chick-fil-A?
That's right.
Nobody else is buying the land, they're not leasing it from nobody else, the corporation is buying this land, and we're dealing exclusively with them in the contract.
Yes, sir.
And there's no buyer representation?
That's right.
Okay. Because seller representation would be the city, buyer representation would be what you're referring to in terms of someone representing Chick-fil-A.
The buyer representation, whether or not they're paying a guy that I think has identified opportunities and locations, I do think they employ somebody on their behalf.
Right, but that's outside the contract, the terms of this contract, that is completely outside of the terms of this contract. So, the answer to your question is still, yes, we net 800,000 dollars.
Right, we're not giving a contract to Harvey Lindsey or anybody else.
I was told today that we are dealing with a third party, and I said, okay, that's not what, that's not what was said in the meeting, okay? Chuck clarified that for me, that we're dealing with Chick-fil-A Corporation.
Who will own the property?
Right.
Who will put a company store, that's not even a franchise, who will company own store, Chick-fil-A will take title of that property.
Is there Chick-fil-A were to employ somebody? Do you see that as a?
No, I don't, what was told to us at this, at the meeting, was that it was not a third party that we were dealing with, Chick-fil-A exclusively, they were going to buy the land, okay, and they're going to build a store.
But if they employ somebody to do that for them, is there a difference?
No, the difference is, that's not, if I was told something different, then yes.
Okay, right. I think you've got the answer that.
Right, I just said if I was told something different.
There are all kinds of rumors out there, there are all kinds of people that wanted to spark.
Well, that's why I get it, I get it cleared up here today.
Well, I think it's as clear as you can possibly think.
Okay. That clears it up, Frank.
My issue is the hotel.
Okay. I'm going to probably open up Pandora's box, because I know it's a sensitive issue, but if I don't address this, because now that the Ocean View St. Patrick's Day Parade has, basically, it's in my whole ward, we've got to do something. I had a, my daughter's kindergarten teacher, who's an assistant principal, Lake Taylor, was severely injured in a car accident driving down Granby Street to Ocean View by a drunk driver who was coming from partying in Ocean View from the parade. Car totaled, just a mess. Over by the Culver, the guy swerved into the other lane where the construction is, there was a makeshift porta potty that somebody set up right across from Northside School. They put a barrel and put a toilet on top of it, and after the parade was over, the people who live over there were like, who, what is this? They went up to it, and there's feces in this barrel, in there. I heard of people urinating in public down there, and some of the bars that are down there just completely disregarding any permits from the city to expand on property, put tents up. There were, people were overcrowding in some of the establishments, because people were just trying to get in there. I know our police, and I talked with some of them afterwards, were exhausted after that parade. And, you know, I have respect for the tradition of that parade, but at some point, you have to put a cap on the safety and the livelihoods, the community feeling in that area. There were people that said they would never bring their kids to that parade again because of the drunk people in public in there, and I know some of that we cannot prevent. But, you know, I left disgusted after we finished walking, I walked over and sat with my family, we had to move three times to get away from people that were pulling out, you know, things of their body that they shouldn't have, or making disgusting comments, and I saw our police working overtime and hard in that area. We've got to do something, we've got to do something to, it's getting out of hand, it was a beautiful day, that might have been something to do with it, I want to celebrate it, and I think it does do some good things, but I also don't want, I mean, there was a murder on Old Ocean View Avenue that probably wasn't even related to the St. Patrick's Day Parade, but guess what got in the headline with that, and guess what was mentioned in there? You know, on the day of the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and they associate with Ocean View, even though it wasn't in Ocean View. And it just concerns me, I mean, is it supposed to be a family oriented parade? You know, is it supposed to be a parade that promotes drinking? What is the point of that parade? I don't want to shut it down, I'm not saying shut it down at all, because I already can tell that's what's going to happen with some of the good old boys in Ocean View, will say, Councilman Smigle wants to shut down, I don't, I just think we should do sobriety checks, maybe, on some parts of Ocean View after the parade, I don't know, we've got to, something's got to be done a little bit differently. I, you know, personally, think Fest Events could probably come in and do an awesome job with that, but it's sad, it's sad to hear that that's the reputation that parade has, and I don't think that's what it was meant to become.
Well, I had to work that day, and so I can't comment on that, but I think that perhaps, if it's possible, Marcus, you may want to sit down, and this is just an offer.
Sure.
Is the chief here?
Yeah.
Maybe sit down with the chief, get an after action review done as to what PD saw, maybe taking in what Tommy has said, of course taking in what Tommy said, not maybe. Maybe do an AAR on it, find out, and then divide up how it played out, and then, once you come up with the problem areas like Tommy has listed, then my suggestion is, not only talk to the Knights, but also as the parade approaches next year, begin an educational aspect of it, because it really comes down to, perhaps we need to do an educational side, it's easy to turn it over to the Knights, and it's easy for us to stand back and have our police, of course, do what they do to keep it fun, but maybe we need to do an educational side of it to not only just the parade itself, but also to the residents and to the visitors as they come in, what is acceptable conduct and what is not acceptable conduct. And, I mean, we're not, we're not New Orleans.
And it's, and I think Tommy thinks it is.
Yeah.
I think it's sort of beyond the Knights, you know, but I do think.
No, it's way beyond.
Yeah, I mean, but these, there are thousands of kids and families having a good time at the same time. We don't want to shut down the fun, but some of the anti-social behavior that's going on has probably reached a point where we need to, and, you know, like Tommy said, I mean, there are certain pockets where it occurs, the police can tell you exactly, they've been dealing with it for years, they don't, I'm sure, you know, the chief of their, you know, her folks, and the police do a wonderful job to try to maintain.
Absolutely.
I'm just, there's some places that we can improve the parade for everybody's sake, for all the families, and I think it's worth it, and I'm sure the Knights would want to be, want to be helping. But I think we can make a better event for everybody if we approach it in a healthy way.
And we can take the educational aspect and do it pre-parade, as the month's approached, pre-parade, you know, get the businesses involved and say, what is acceptable conduct, what's not acceptable, get the bars involved, and perhaps have meetings at the library or at the Knights. Not, and I'm not, it's not the Knights, I know that, I know what Tommy's saying, but get a location down there where we can say, what is acceptable, what is not acceptable conduct, and put that out there, and tell the bars, you know, listen, there's certain responsibilities that you may have in this, and we need you to help TD and make that occur, but it's going to be an educational process, and it may not happen in a year. It may, it may take more than one parade to get that done, but it is something that we need to.
You mean like the code of conduct that they have at the beach? Kind of like the code of conduct.
Well, we don't want to go to the beach as code of conduct, we want to have fun.
No, no, but I mean, just kind of something.
We don't want to sterilize everything.
Who was responsible for picking up the trash after the parade? Was that the city that was responsible for that?
Typically, it is, it is us.
Because there were, I don't think there were any garbage cans that were laid out on the parade route, but it, I mean, I don't know, I think there's a certain level of responsibility to, and I don't want to put it on the Knights.
No, not at all.
But there should be a volunteer group after that parade from the Knights that walks down Granby Street and helps the city pick up the trash from that. I mean, I don't know, maybe we're generating tons of revenue from that parade, we don't know that, but I.
Okay, the Knights.
The city takes up a lot of ownership for that parade, too.
They have their hands full just trying to get the parade organized and all.
Yeah, I know.
It's all they can do to get it staged, and they are exhausted.
We need to help them out, and we need to use our assets to help them make it happen.
Sure.
And maybe, you know, we need to team them up with Karen Scherberger and her folks, because they know what they're doing with stuff like that, and they can.
There's a certain intrusion to that stuff.
I agree with a lot of them.
Just advice, I didn't say give it to the Fest Events, I said just be there to give advice on how to organize, I mean, there were gaps in that parade, people thought the parade was over, because there were so many gaps, I mean, there was things that could make it more of a quality family.
You know those swords they carry, they may be using those for other things, I think, that they're going to be listening like that, I think that.
I mean, I'm sure I'll start getting emails from everybody in Ocean View saying, Smigle wants to shut, I don't want to shut the parade, I just think we want to make it more of a family.
Just need to offer some help, and we need to take it upon ourselves.
I mean, you wouldn't have that, and, I mean, again, if it started to get to that point, I'm sure you would, you would hear the same complaints, you know?
I just say, when we start talking, we need to have them at the table, because they don't want, they don't want.
I know they don't, yeah.
Going on, and, you know, they, we got the Norfolk Public Schools, and three bands this year, they've never sent them forward, they put a policeman, two policemen in a golf cart behind each band, so that the Knights were, I think they're really open minded to working with, and trying, working with the city and trying to clean up, because they did escort the band, because your gal there runs a van on them.
Right, I know it's an election year, you don't want to upset the Knights, Bartlett.
I'm just saying, the special part of Norfolk that we can improve, I'm all about it.
We can do a better job as a city.
Every time I open my mouth.
We can make it a better event for everyone, for everybody. We just, and we really have had sort of a hands-off approach to it, other than the police, we just, it's gotten so big now, that, you know, we can help.
That's it, that's all.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, what is this? Oh, um, we don't have time right now, but maybe next week, I'm going to take a couple minutes and talk to you about a program that I'm going to ask you to agree to. Again, it's just a very, it's the Mayor's Commission on Poverty Reduction in Norfolk, and it's going to be something where we, it'll have about a six or seven month lifespan. We've done a pretty good job of reducing poverty in the city, but this will focus on the causes and ways we can approach it, have the EDA at the table, and the Housing Authority at the table, but we have a whole series of representatives at the table. Other cities have done this, so they can come back with a recommendation for us, they can put it in a, you know, in a, in a report, and then we can try to act on it, and I think we do some good. Okay, and I'll get back to, just a first crack at who might be on, who might be on the board, we'll get this out to you, like a school board member, somebody from the Housing Authority, person in the real estate industry, physician, retired physician, somebody from a local college or university, somebody from the faith community, so, and Richmond had one like this, and I think it worked pretty well, that's where I actually wrote that. All right, okay, then we'll stay in this area.